... facilities charge or a new connection charge for a project that provides new capacity. So if we want to have new development pay the maximum possible, we have to most carefully identify all of the projects that provide any kind of capacity expansion. And that's why in that long list, there are projects that where we have upsized sewer conveyance pipes, water pipes and other things. They're not, it'd be very difficult to go through that project list and say, well, Project X is all for the sailors, but it's not for anywhere else. There's really a long list of projects that have some component of capacity increase, and that component is then factored into the GSC, which gets you that $25,000 per ERU that we were talking about. So that's the reason for having that split and why we distinguish when you ask Mr. Lee, is that growth related? He said, well, it can be, but not necessarily. We're really looking overall at utility system capacity increases and then being able to charge as much of that as possible to new development.
I think another good example in that CIP plan is improvements that are having been done on about the Greek streets here for the larger high school. Some of those places have to be upsized. The school district's paying a GSC for that. That's one of the first TSs being paid. And that's characterized in some respects as, you know, upsizing for new development or new growth. It's true, a bigger high school, but I don't think most of the community, they put that in the category new growth would be thinking that's what they're thinking. So that's where there's a bit more gray. It doesn't fall into, you need clean boxes. Another perspective I'd added, and Bob, I know you look at the CIP and this one, I seem to recall they had hundreds of millions of dollars of sort of capital improvement or in their CIP plan. There's a number that's quite large. Cities have pretty significant numbers of cash or capital improvement.
Yeah, but as Craig's, but in the audience too, you could ask. But I think, I think that's what you have a possible. But I think what the mayor's talking about is that the Issaquah plan has a five-year window and then a future years, five to 10-year window. And so when you look at that total number, I think it was in the 188 billion range, something like that. And their out year, five to 10 window is not funded. The numbers we're talking about here, as Mr. Bouteille was explaining, are 100% funded by the, by the cash debt proposal that's outlined in the plan.
Yeah, the point being that there's, there's big numbers in CIP plans across cities across the state. Some are being more aggressive with their infrastructure than others. We just don't want to tolerate, you know, a level, a level of deferred maintenance that's going to drive much higher costs for residents down in the future years. We think it's just a smart investment to aggressively add to that and again, get us into a proactive state of maintenance. We're, we're a pretty odd city. We don't compare to many, because Councilmember Quo pointed out, we got a big chunk of, you know, what's down approaching 85 plus percent of the city is, is the park that was built rather rapidly in a very short timeframe. And so the downside of that is all aging at the same time. And then you have this historical part of the city that was allowed to go into largely an entire state of failure and decay. And so there's not many cities that have that kind of dual challenge faced in a similar timeframe.
I was actually going to make that point in terms of, you know, there are many times that we compare ourselves to other municipalities. For instance, the services, you can base a lot of that on size of community population, the type of makeup you have in your business community. Utilities are very hard to compare city to city. So to make that comparison, we should only be spending X amount because a neighboring city is only spending that is a little bit erroneous in terms of you don't know what they have done or not done, what their development is. I suspect Issaquah with the amount of development that they've had in the last 20 or 30 years, it probably upgraded a lot of their facilities too. I'm only making this up position, knowing what I know about Issaquah. But it's, and it's, it's one of the places where I don't think we do want to compare. We really want to take care of what our infrastructure is and depending on the closings of it. We've spent a lot of time in the last two years really narrowing into what projects we absolutely need to do. Brian's committee has been working on this for rates and rate studies and what to include in our rates for a long time. But this isn't something that we take with you.
Yeah, I guess last point to make is comparing how much utility bonds a city took out is really completely, I mean, what, what resident would put their brain around understanding that? You know, the only things that end, that should end, really matter at the end of the day for residents is kind of three metrics. One is, what's our bond rating? You know, the rate is pretty high. It says this city's doing, you know, best business practices, we're in a slow risk. So we're running our shop real tight and clean. The second is utility rate itself. Compare that please to other communities. We're coming in the middle of a pack even though we're aggressively going after this stuff. What that tells you is we're, we're delivering high value. Because the third metric is what is the state of the infrastructure? Drive with please. Take those comparisons and run with them. Drive around all these other communities and compare our infrastructure. I'd compare it to anybody around here to say that our infrastructure is in superior shape compared to most communities. It's exactly why we get ranked as one of the best places to live in high quality of life, because we're aggressively staying after this. So, so how is it that we could aggressively get after this, this infrastructure, but still deliver a utility rate that's very competitive to other communities? And it's because we're staying in a proactive state of maintenance. If you let it go into decay, you're paying high cost for crap.
One other distinction, and again, again, comparing to other communities is where we run a wastewater treatment facility. Issaquah does not. Correct?
Correct.
So when you're factoring in costs, obviously maintaining that mega million dollar facility has to be, and maintaining it has to be taken into account, right?
Correct. And if you were going to look upriver to the next community that does have a wastewater treatment plant, they are contemplating improvements to that in the order of 20 to 30 million dollars or more that they're going to have to find.
I have one last thing I want to do, which is to be pretty unconventional, which has me, just wanted to know, Bill Ramos wouldn't mind just kind of add a couple of questions from, would that be okay?
Thank you, I was thinking the same thing.
So the only reason I'm doing that is because you're a city councilman, so anything that happens here is going to be way easier than what you have on Issaquah.
And Bill, you're on the record.
Now, my question for you is a-
And you're asking me everything off the top of my head. 188 billion is correct.
Does this tell you?
Are you, first of all, question, are you running for election this?
I am the only one on the council member.
Good, so the truth, I get pure truth as a municipal. So, question for you, why does Issaquah take out debt? Because we have some, some, understandably, fair, in fairness, there's some in the, in our community that are concerned about debt. Debt is not a word we, any of us like to have, right? But we also, in most people's cases, there are certain types of debt we're willing to take on. The best example is probably home debt. If you could kind of summarize why Issaquah takes on debt and-
Yeah, in other words, why is Issaquah insolvent?
And I will clarify, this is Bill Ramos's opinion here. Okay, I'm not speaking for the rest of my city council by any means, and I'm talking off the top of my head, okay? So debt, as many of you have talked about, is the way to spread out costs and keep things level. And particularly for those high cost things and, you know, paying upfront. So, but we have this debate a little bit too, because sometimes when you, when you spread things out, you have interest in those, those other costs that you weigh on how much you want to spread out. So usually it's for the bigger projects if you don't have the cash upfront. But we, you know, worries that line. So we do take on debt and we also have a very good rating that keeps our, our costs of taking on debt very low. So, is that, can I add anything?
Yeah, we just, we get compared to you a lot and I don't know, I think you should be flattered, because I think we're the best city to live in on the east side. But I just wanted to make the, I just wanted to, you know, we're very different from you at the same time and we're going to have a lot pizza pretty soon, so it's one less reason for me to go to Issaquah. But, I mean, you guys are a regional hub, a transit hub, and you have a metropolitan area that we don't have with San Amish and even Renton and the Sun degree. And so as much as I love you guys, I don't think it's a great comparison. But I did want, in the, in the, with the concept of debt, you couldn't have come at a better time. I wanted another perspective, because you are very frequently referenced as a city that we should be comparing ourselves to, even though you're three times the population. So I appreciate you articulating why Issaquah values debt. And obviously you guys have friendly, warm conversations down there as well, but I appreciate you doing this on no notice.
And I just envy, Bill, that you guys aren't dealing with growth issues, are you?
Yeah, growth and traffic, nobody in pink kind of deal with growth, guys.
And you've got fish to worry about.
On Main Street.
Thank you, Bill.
So, along the same lines, again, Google's a great thing. One of the, one of the cities that was brought in comparison was Renton. And if you Google that, Renton raised utility rate 24% over two years, they've remained as upgraded since it was October 7th, 2010. And of interest down here to the comments made earlier, utilities are paid with a combination of bonds, basically loans and rates. Projects to build utility, infrastructures of water, water, sewer, typically are paid with bonds. And the city has quoted as saying, I'm going to be rolling here, they're unhappy with the amount of debt, but it is something they need to do to address the concerns of the city. So Renton also does debt servicing for the utilities. Why Issaquah and others don't have sewer, they pay indirectly to King County. And I'm sure King County has bond issues against its sewer utility and it just rolls through to the cities, okay?
Because what rolls downhill?
Water. Good answer, Brent.
And then the other one, there was somewhat of a suggestion of, why aren't we splitting these costs between, I'm sorry, but I'm going to say it, between downtown and uptown? Personally, please, the council have, don't like that. You also look at, if you look at the tab fees we do now, they're going to go to the parkway. Well, somebody downtown here is paying tab fees, not using the parkway. Boy, is that fair? Well, yeah, because you're also giving a portion of the utilities that probably is coming from the ridge coming downtown. So we manage the city as a city.
Well, the bottom line is, you know, it's not an issue of being kumbaya and I want to take care of my neighbors. It's a selfish interest too. If I don't take care of that, I mean, if we're connected in our utility infrastructure together, whether it's shotgun wedding or whatever it is, if I let, if I let your infrastructure rot, it's going to end up on my bill eventually too. So it's a lose all of us to take care of all of our infrastructure.
Because we're one city.
Yeah. I'm good. Believe it or not, I'm good. Point is, that's harder.
Any further discussion, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Community Development Committee, Agenda Bill 17124, ordinance adopting an amendment to the Snoqualmie Comprehensive Plan Snoqualmie 2032, providing for severability and effective date. Again, this was introduced last time and it only requires the motion to be ready. Ready for action tonight?
This is M.A. That would be me.
Yes, easy.
Hold on. Get that closer. Summary statement, right?
No, read the motion.
Okay. Move to adopt ordinance-
1193.
1193, adopting an amendment to this Snoqualmie Comprehensive Plan-
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 1192.
Move to adopt ordinance 1192, adopting an amendment to this Snoqualmie Comprehensive Plan Snoqualmie 2032, providing for severability and effective date.
Second. And motion, second to approve ordinance 1192, as stated by Councilmember Sunwol. Is there any discussion, Council? Any members of the public that would like to comment on the second prior action? Seeing no one before, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Finance Administration Committee, Agenda Bill 17131, ordinance authorizing the issuance of sale of water and sewer utility revenue bond anticipation note in principle of not to exceed 10 million dollars for the purpose of providing funds to finance and refinance improvements to the city's water, sewer and stormwater systems and paying cost of issuance for the note, making certain covenants with respect to the note, providing the form and terms of the note, delegating the authority to approve the final terms of the note, providing for severability and an effective date and authorizing other matters related thereto. Again, this was introduced last meeting, is ready for action tonight. Read the motion.
Move to approve, adopt ordinance number-
1193.
1193. Ordinance authorizing issuance of sale of water and sewer utility revenue bond anticipation note in the principle amount of not to exceed 10 million for the purpose of providing funds to finance and refinance improvements to the city's water, sewer and stormwater system and paying the cost of issuance of the note, making certain covenants with respect to the note, providing the form and terms for the note, delegating the authority to approve the final terms of the note, providing for severability and for the effective date and authorizing other matters related thereto. I'm looking for a second.
Second. And a motion, second to approve ordinance 1193, as stated by Councilmember Keys. Is there any discussion, Council? Are you guys for a presentation or just to answer questions?
Mayor, thank you very much. And the council, we're back. Just any questions you may have? This is pretty straightforward and doesn't, it does involve the capital plan that we just approved and adopted. Essentially an interim financing product that we're putting forward, replacing an existing interim financing product that was outstanding, 15 and a half million dollars, excuse me, available to the city.
Nicholas, can you both introduce yourselves for the sake of the, we don't know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Nicholas Lee, Chief Financial Officer for the city.
And?
And Jan Gregory, who's from Pacifica Law, she's our bond counsel.
And she also has the benefit of being a Snoqualmie business.
Yeah, she is. Works off the same utility system than most of us. So essentially this, this product, this instrument is reducing the, actually out the available credit or debt that the city has as interim financing for the, for the utilities capital plan from 15 and a half million down to 10. Essentially, we're going to get more rates likely from this transaction as well, so potentially saving us more money when it comes time to pay it.
Is this, this is a one year?
Correct.
And so this gets us through some of the projects on the CIP we just approved-
Correct.
-that would go toward the 55 million. So it's a, it's an interim step toward that larger amount?
Correct. Yes, you spoke, we spoke earlier about solvency. I mean, this isn't really a product that's going to allow us to remain solvent, to pay cash for products as we go forward, but only pay interest as we draw on that line of credit to pay for those projects. So we're trying to be as efficient as possible with capital. We don't, we, at this time haven't gone forward to issue long-term debt, because we want to make sure that we're kind of pacing our, our borrowing with our spending, so that we don't have-
One of the things I was going to mention is while it's a 15 and a half million dollar line of credit, we only grew with 525,000 at the instant. So it's a vehicle that allows us to perhaps have some flexibility in our, our cash while we're doing these projects, but we haven't drawn on it if we might need it.
Is this essentially reducing our line of credit?
It is.
So if I have a credit card that's 15,000, we're not taking it down to 10,000 except millions?
Yes.
Or I take it off third, okay? Okay. This is not the refi that's coming up next?
I'll stand here and wait for that.
Okay. It's perfect. One insurance thing.
What would be the interest rate on this one?
Well, it's, we don't have it fixed as of yet. So essentially what we're going to do, this ordinance actually authorizes the mayor to come to go out and complete this transaction. We do have LIBOR, let's see, it's 65% of one month LIBOR plus 1% is what the rate was at, or 1.8. We've actually got that down to 0.6. So we're seeing about 40 basis points, or four tenths of 1%. It is a variable interest rate product, and that's why I'm a little hesitant to quote it an exact rate, because it will fluctuate as LIBOR, which is eventually going to go away, Councilmember Keys pointed that out. As that fluctuates, this line of credit will fluctuate, somewhat like a HELOC or a home line of credit. Since we're using the home analogy, it's some, it's something similar, but it's what the utilities, for instance, we borrow and we pay only on what we borrow. And we invest that in, let's say, improvements to our respective assets.
All right. No further questions, or any member of the public like to comment on the second prior action? Seeing no one before, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Move on Agenda Bill 17132, ordinance authorizing the issuance of a water and sewer utility revenue refunding bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 4 million dollars for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer utility revenue bond 2008, providing the form, terms and covenants of the bond, delegating certain authority to approve the final terms of the bond, providing for severability and effective date and authorizing other matters related thereto.
And the recommended-
Just read the motion, please.
Move to adopt ordinance number-
1194.
1194, authorizing the issuance of water and sewer utility revenue refunding bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 4 million dollars for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer utility revenue bond 2008, providing the form, terms and covenants of the bond, delegating certain authority to approve the final terms of the bond, providing for severability and effective date and authorizing other matters related thereto. And the recommended-
Just read the motion, please.
Move to adopt ordinance number-
1194.
1194, authorizing the issuance of water and sewer utility revenue refund bond in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 4 million dollars for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding water and sewer utility revenue bond 2008, providing the form, terms and covenants of the bond, delegating certain authority to approve the final terms of the bond, providing for severability and the effective date and authorizing other matters related thereto.
Need a second for-
Second.
A motion, second to approve ordinance number 1194, as stated by Councilmember Keys. Any discussion?
So we, in 2008, issued bond for 7 million. We used about 4.1 of that, that is now, is that what, under you this correctly?
We, we used all of it, but we paid back all of that.
Sorry, 4.1 is still due.
Yes.
And that's coming out there at the end of this year. So we're refinancing that into a better deal and we're saving like what, 400, some thousand, some-
It's a great news story. I'm going to turn it over to Deanna, because she loves telling you-
Cut the news. No, it's real.
Yeah, no. No, kind of. How's that?
Kind of works.
Kind of. You are correct, the city did issue revenue debt in 2008 to the student number of 7 million dollars to finance a full host of utility projects. And as you are, is also correct, there is about 4 million change that outstanding. It just lets you pay off your mortgage over time, you also pay debt service on the bonds over time, including a portion of the principal. So the city has been paying down the principal since 2009, and it's not happening, assuming eight or nine. And just also, same with the home analogy, just like you can refinance your house for a lower interest rate, state law and federal tax law also allows you to refinance municipal debt. So you can refinance your bonds also for savings, just like how you would refinance your home loan for savings for a lower interest rate. So with this bond issue, the city is solely issuing a new bond to refinance solely for savings purposes, the existing currently outstanding 2008 bonds. And it's keeping the outstanding term of same. So this, the new bond will be repaid over a period of 10 years, same maturity length as the existing 2008 bonds, where you're not extending the house, you're not extending the final maturity date. And so the payment schedule will stay the same. The one thing that is changing though, is that interest rate. So there is an overall savings and the city would not move forward with this or with ordinance if there was not savings. There is savings associated with this and there's, and, but other than that, the principal payments are staying just about the same, over the same period of time, which is-
So how much is the savings?
Do I have it in front of me? Annual savings as of this last was about 10% net present value savings over the life of the bond, about 400,000 and some change.
That wasn't kind of right. That was-
You were spot on, absolutely. And that is, and some change. And the savings are calculated taking into account all additional issuance costs. The bank is not charging a fee for the, for extending this, this loan to the city, but there are any, any issuance costs that are associated with this, with the issuance of this new bond, those are calculated. So those savings are after taking into account any issuance costs.
Like a home loan, closing costs are wrapped into the, okay.
Absolutely.
So, wow. Plus.
Look at that.
So let me just continue with the analogies, because sometimes this can be really complex, especially when we've been here for almost five hours.
Absolutely.
So this would be like me taking out a 30-year home loan and at the 15-year mark, refining it to a 15-year loan.
Absolutely.
So my end date is still the same and I'm theoretically saving, not theoretically, I'm saving money on my interest rate and all that except-
You are absolutely correct.
That's twice what I-
And I think we want to be really careful about maturity dates, because part of our fiscal policies on the revenue of bonds is that maturity can't be further out than the life of the facility that it's based on. So keeping that maturity date is extremely important, but one of the things that the bond winners looks at when they're looking at our use of debt.
That is correct. And there are, there are considerations to be considered on top of that, bolster that statement. And there, we're not, trying to find the language, in section 13 of the ordinance states that the final maturity of the bond will be known later than December 1, 2027. And that is the final maturity of the 2008 bonds. And so the consideration of this ordinance today, that date is set. So Nicholas, can I mention that? And I also want to point out, I know we've had this conversation before, that there are no new money proceeds with this bond, other than the fact that both of these bonds are paid from the same source of funds, utility revenues, not general fund revenues, not property taxes. These really have nothing to do with one another, but the overall debt package portfolio of the city will be going down from the age of this bond. Any more questions?
All right. If there's no further questions from the council, I forgot, do I kick out to the audience somebody? Does remember the audience would like to comment on the second prior action? Seeing no one before, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. That was 1194, right? Or Agenda Bill 17142? Okay. Ordinance updating school impact fee pursuant to ordinance number 826 in chapter 2.10 Snoqualmie Municipal Code. Again, this is only for introduction tonight, so if you just read the summary statement.
City of Snoqualmie adopted ordinance number 826 on September 28, 1998, adopting chapter 20.10 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code in the setting school impact fees as authorized by the Growth Management Act based upon Snoqualmie Valley School District number 410, Capital Facilities Plan 1998. The city should update the school impact fee based on the most recent district capital facilities plan adopted by reference by the city.
Okay, again, this is for introduction plan, or are there councilor, any questions for it from them?
Well, I'd just like to, oh, it's gone after many, look at this, that this is a pass through. Our obligation on the impact fees is simply to collect them. It is based on a capital facilities plan that the school district creates and were identified from the calculation of the city. And so this is, our obligation is simply to collect it and to pass it.
So-
Brian Stokes is here for you, man. Yeah, Ryan has it.
Anything? Is he first or I get that question? Okay. It's actually directed toward you. So I see the new amount is 10,096 and 27 cents. Does that sound familiar? Yep. Okay. Glad we can go with 28 cents. That looked great. So my question is, my natural question is, so forget that I'm a city council member, is, to this conversation of growth paying for growth, right? We collect these fees, yet we still have 170, whatever the million dollar bond is to build new school, image school, new high school, all that kind of stuff. So my natural question is, as a regular guy, is why aren't we collecting more of the impact fee? That's, I understand, making homes, new homes, more expensive. But why aren't we collecting more to reach that? Is there some sort of state law that mitigates the amount, the percentage that we're able to collect for a school? Because I'm, we're paying for these, these fees, new home buyers are paying 10,000, call it 10,100, yet we're still have these mega million dollar bonds to build schools.
Yeah, so there's a couple of factors in that, oh, sorry, I'm about to, Brian Stokes, Assistant Superintendent of Finance Operations for Snoqualmie School District. The capital facilities plan is a six-year outlook only of, of future capacity needs for the district. And so there's a number of factors on that. So one thing is you calculate, and the impact fee is the proportional share of the cost that the students generated from those new homes will contribute to the, to the actual
that the students generated from those new homes will contribute to the, to the actual overall infrastructure of the district. There's a couple of things in that plan that reduce your impact fee, so once we determine the cost, let's say, there's a student generation rate, so a new home will on average generate point six students, and that point six students is going to show up, and what is the capacity that we need to build over the next six years? So we figure out, and this is in the plan towards about page nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, that then gives you the cost per residence for that, those facility needs over the next six years. The Growth Management Act then has some discounts that go on to that fee. One discount is, takes into account the existing taxes that that new home will pay over the next ten years, and creates a net present value over an interest rate. So there's a, the actual fee, and then the fee is reduced by the tax, the existing taxes that those homeowners will pay for the next ten years relating to school, school bonds. And then the Growth Management Act also then gives the counties, when the counties enact that, they get to determine what the local share is, and so King County has determined a fifty percent local share. So after you take away those credits from the cost per residence, King County has to find local shares fifty percent, so fifty percent of that cost is then not passed on to the new home, and so a lot of that is driven by, by code and ordinance. So, in, in most cases, the impact fees pay for intermediate solutions, which is typically the portable building, so it's a lot that you pass for a permanent solution, because most of that cost has been whittled down, and I think when I look at it, it's really about ten percent, after you look at all of the tax reductions and fifty percent local shares, really ends up being about ten percent of the cost.
That's in addition to the land, you know, basically, all the development costs and utility stuff, all this, and the land, land ready for development, correct? Like I'm Snoqualmie district.
Right. Yeah, so like this plan doesn't have land purchase in it, because the plan would be for a future elementary school, and we currently own land, but we have housed an elementary school. So if we thought we needed to buy land, then that would go into this factor over the next six years, and would increase the-
So the Fairness and State law is literally impossible for development to pay for a school?
Correct.
Okay.
So, there's other factors too going in. In our current situation, the state is funding for lower class sizes for K three, so that creates some demand for additional classrooms. We had estimated at about sixty classrooms a few years ago. The new elementary school, Timber Ridge, brought on thirty-three of those classrooms. And so those classrooms are also, you know, current residents are benefiting from that lower class size that is creating demand for, for more capacity. And so there, you know, if you had new developments paying for a new school, you would need a lot of homes sold at one spot, and all those kids, so it becomes spread over time.
Bill, help me understand, and I don't know if actually Bill would be able to comment on this, Bill Ramos, but, again, this could be urban legend, but my understanding is Issaquah School District is building four or five schools for basically free, and what I mean by free, is that, am I right, Bill? Based on no additional bond debt, because of expiring bond debt is being replaced by, am I off on that?
He just voted last year on the microphone. I'm sorry, Bill, you might come into the microphone, you know, you serve on the school board here, right?
Yeah, school board here. Can't speak for the school board here, but with last year-